All right, so we are going to call the meeting to order at 6:30. And we're going to start with a roll call. Mary Kachewski. Joe Coletti.
Joe Coletti, Hebron.
Mike Sharon.
Mike Sharon, Hebron.
Kirsten Erlenson. Carrie Felino. She not on?
Uh, yeah, she's on.
She is? Okay. Gabe.
Mark Hebron.
Mike.
Mike Morris, Hebron.
Eric.
Eric Shevchenko.
And.
Sue.
Sue Stoffing, Marlboro.
Heather.
Heather Summer, Hebron.
If we could stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The first item on our agenda for tonight's meeting is the election of board officers in accordance with policy 9130. We will start with the election of the board chair. I will now open the floor for nominations for chair. Do I have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mike.
Sue is nominating Mike.
Mike Sharon.
Mike.
Please be clear.
Mike Morris. There's somebody trying to join. Wasn't Carrie?
A community member.
Okay. All right. Any other nominations for chair?
I'll second that motion.
All right. Second slide, Mike Sharon. Any discussion? Not seeing any other nominations or not seeing any other, not having any discussion. We'll do a roll call vote. Mary is not here. Joe?
Yes.
Mike Sharon?
Yes.
Kirsten Erlenson? Carrie?
Yes.
Gabe?
Yes.
Eric?
Yep.
Sue?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
And Mike Morris.
I'm staying.
All right. Mike Morris is our chair, and I will pass the meeting off to you, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate it, and I appreciate your vote, and I appreciate your confidence, everyone. All right. That being said, I think one of the things that I remember being productive in some of these elections in the past is to, especially with some of the, with the secretary and the treasurer, but might as well for the vice chair, too. I'm aware of at least one member who's interested. Is there, are there any other members that are interested in serving? So I'll accept nominations for vice chair. And with that, I'll nominate Sue as our vice chair.
I'll second that.
Hey, Mary beat you to that one, Eric, sorry. I'm sorry, Carrie. Is that somebody chiming in, or is that a?
A community member.
No, I second it.
Okay, we got you. Thank you, Carrie. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. I'm sorry, any other, any other discussion? Actually, I'm going to throw a piece of discussion out. My nomination is based on one very key piece. Over the course of my last year of serving as the superintendent, I think it's important to point out that we've had to make some difficult decisions. There's been some times where there were very different opposing views and a couple of key circumstances. One of the things you would hope from a very seasoned board member is for them to be the voice of, of, uh, what's the, what's the right term? Well, experience, but also of compromise, which is what we needed. And I think that is an extremely important part of being the vice chair is to be that voice of compromise and be able to help lead in that circumstance. And Sue definitely did that over the course of the last year. So I'm very happy to be able to nominate her, and I'm glad that, I'm hopeful that everybody else will see that as well. So with that being the case, is there any other discussion? All right, I'll have a roll call vote. Carrie?
Yes.
Thank you. Joe?
Yes.
Mary's not here. Sue? Heather?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Gabe?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
I vote yes. And Kirsten?
Yes.
Great, thank you. All right, so that carries unanimously. Congratulations, and thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Nominations for secretary. Anybody interested in serving as a secretary?
I've done it before, I can do it again.
Okay. That being said, I knew there was at least one person available, so I nominate Mike Sharon as our secretary. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Sue got that one. All right. Is there any other nominations for secretary? Any discussion on the nomination for secretary, Mike Sharon? Hearing no discussion, we'll have a voice vote. I'm sorry, a roll call vote. Carrie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary's not here. Sue?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Gabe?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
I vote yes. Kirsten? Great, thank you. All right. That motion carries unanimously. Mike is our secretary. We'll move on to treasurer. Again, I am aware of at least one interested party. Is there any other, anybody else that is interested? You're the party I was aware of.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
All right. I would like to nominate Joe Coletti as our treasurer. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Gabe got that one. Is there any other nominations for treasury? Treasurer, sorry. Any discussion on Joe Coletti's nomination as the treasurer? Hearing no discussion, we'll have a roll call vote. Carrie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary? Not here, sorry. Sue?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Gabe?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
I vote yes. Kirsten? Great, thank you. All right, that carries unanimously as well. Congratulations, and I appreciate all three of you, again, volunteering to serve in that capacity.
We also appreciate you, Mike. Phenomenal job.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right. That is our first order of business. There are office elections. Move on to public comment, item number four. You'll bear with me for a moment. Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro community engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. So in anticipation of potentially a number of people wanting to present tonight, I'll just refresh everybody that generally we hold the comments to three minutes, but it is within the chair's authority to extend a discussion. And I guess what I would really like to just maybe get a feel for is, within the room, how many people plan on presenting comment? Two? Okay, and then online, could you show us with a digital hand, anybody that's interested in presenting comment? This one?
I just see one.
Okay, all right. Look, so I think we have a reasonable amount of time to be able to accommodate everybody. So great. So what I'll, firstly, was open it up. I'm sorry, Gabe.
Do you think I should close the door?
Uh, you know what? It's a public meeting, unless it gets real noisy.
Because of the game.
All right. So I would ask, within the board, within the room, if you could please identify yourself and then step up the podium and please present. Sorry if you'd like to go first.
My name's David Olia. I live at 37 Out of One Detroit. I've lived in the Ram district for 33 years. My wife and I raised two kids, who are now since out of the house. And I teach at the University of Connecticut, and I'm in the first-year writing program there. And I'm very passionate about education as a means for growth for students. Well, often I think, though, an explicit act receives more public attention, such as this racist noose, than the underlying problem itself. That problem is neither adequately nor fully embraced, what justice is applied to the act. My heart breaks for students of color and their families as they deal, not only with this specific act, but with the ongoing sense of injustice. I understand that your faculty is filled with talented and motivated teachers, and I urge you to unleash their experience to address these students' needs. One teacher in the district told me recently, "Look at what we accomplished when we pivoted to the pandemic. Imagine what we can do pivoting to this issue." Your teachers are professional practitioners, and they are ready to partner and lead. As a board, you too have tools to address the problem of injustice. One, you may direct your superintendent to immediately empower and engage your talented faculty. I'm concerned, though, about the fact that we're partners. I'd like to say this in the kindest way possible. I believe we need to be nice to each other. I believe that we need to listen to each other, and we need to speak our truths. And we need to collaborate in ways to promote equitable and civilist force. But I'm deeply concerned this superintendent does not conceptualize teachers as partners, and even holds hostility towards conversation about social justice. As the board's aware, the superintendent's professional experience is rooted in personnel. I witnessed his framework of teachers as an employee at South Windsor High School 19 years, rather than seeing teachers as partners who are practitioners with expertise in their academic disciplines, in which they have earned degrees, certifications, and built experience. I'd like to share a specific personal experience that informs my concern, that he lacks commitment and capacity to critical conversation about inclusion. 2015, at South Windsor, I had a conversation with him about a poem by Allen Ginsberg, which had themes of sexual identity at its core. I offered multiple interpretations, which included Harvard's literary critic Helen Vender's reading, all which challenged common knowledge. He replied in a quote, "I don't understand hidden meaning." He was either unwilling or unable at the time to process multiple perspectives about identity in literature. Maybe you remember this incident. When I was teaching at South Windsor in 2015, I had allowed the reading of an Allen Ginsberg poem, which a student had brought to our AP Vance Plaister, UConn ECE senior literature class. Two parents complained about the poem. I offered to speak with the parents. My request was denied. No conversation, no interesting conversation. Indeed, he and his administration said to me, "Oh, we just want to get this behind us." So we moved to fire him. I negotiated a separation package instead of going to arbitration. What would be the point, really, of teaching under such hostility towards inclusion, a rejection of conversation about the diverse perspectives of literature, and a lack of good faith in discussion about teaching and learning? Immediately after then, UConn hired me. I've taught this same course many iterations for the past seven years. The ECE program, Early College Education Program, which I'm sure the board is familiar with, addresses immediately issues of inequity. And in fact, I include anti-racism teaching statements from UConn ECE and the National Council of Teachers of English in my written remarks that I shared with the board prior to coming here. Sent them an email. In conclusion, I stand before you with a professional and personal experience to respectfully ask for an honest rendering in this district. I ask that you respond to the needs of the students of color, and those whose identity in some way has been marginalized. I call for us to be kind to those historically been made to feel other. I ask that this board commission its teaching staff to partner and collaborate with their administrative colleagues to do the difficult work of addressing the challenges of equity that's central to democratic civic life. Thank you for listening.
Okay. Is there anyone else for public comment that's present? Please, sir.
Evening, everybody. My name's Carrie McManus. You see me at different times over the last few years. Earlier this year, during the budget presentation, the discussion was extremely important. It was a statement that I've alluded to a couple times since then. We would discuss the budget, the discount, this budget, this presentation, all the other boards in town, except the track obligations of budget contractually public, and what we've done to appease them. At the same time, we think this obligation issue, as many hundreds of thousands of dollars as agreed to, was negotiated three years ago in previous negotiations. I went to the meeting, listened to the presentations, did not understand the obligations until paying to copy the contract, was able to project out what the cost would be. It was pretty much dead on. Very large difference from this year's budget as agreed to 10 years ago. As a citizen, and this is why we're here, is I want to understand what we're agreeing to as a community member. This line, contractually allocated costs always contributes to. The boards are performing their function and to the stature as codified state law. And I have to applaud you. What I'm going to ask you as a citizen, you presenting the budget to me the rest of the citizens next year, that you do so in a manner of understanding whatever you agree to tonight is going to fall under that line of contractually allocated costs. I'm not sure that you agree with this issue. I'm not even sure if it's any costly. I wanted to say this before the next one. Having said that, I appreciate everything you all do, work hard, and talk to us.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else present that would like to present for public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to online. If you could raise a digital hand, I'll ask Eric to let me know who's online that would like to present.
One. I can hear that. Joanne Hebert.
Say again.
Joanne Hebert.
Joanne Hebert, please.
Hello. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to just make a quick statement. I also wanted to comment on the recent situation of the unfortunate, the noose being hung in the boys locker room. I do want to commend that the investigation took place, and, you know, the student has been located, and that's a whole separate issue that will be dealt with, you know, as a personal situation. But I am hoping that Ram will take this opportunity as a learning and teaching event, as the gentleman had said earlier. I had, I work for a school district that has undertaken this work for the last couple of years. We really dove in after the, you know, the social injustice events that happened in our country. I feel like our district could really be a model for others. I don't want to mention them. I will send a letter to all of you referencing them, but they do a terrific job. I find that it seems like Ram is defensive, and I could be wrong, this is from the outside looking in, you know, very defensive to, you know, put things aside, or, you know, defend different things, or that things aren't happening there, or it's not, you know, it's one isolated incident. But truthfully, that's, I would hope that people could look at it as an opportunity to learn and grow. Like I said, I've always been welcoming and kind to everyone, but with undertaking the work that we took extensively as a district, we learned so much. In the shoes of some of the people that presented to you last meeting, I guess I'm a little bit behind the times, you really don't fully understand everything. So, you know, Ram being such a, you know, I have three children that went through the Ram school system, they're all doing excellent academically. I think Ram is at the forefront. I'd like to see some of these, you know, to make well-rounded students, to, you know, talk about things head-on in the social justice world. We want to raise well-equipped students to go out there into the world and to base all kinds of things. So, again, until you can, can walk, you know, instead of defending, maybe just learn something from it. You know, between letters I've read, people saying that they don't want to undertake any kind of, any kind of lessons, or why should they have to do it because it was one isolated incident, that's really not what you learn when you really commit yourself to learning and, and having open workshops and forums and really devoting. They're hard conversations to have. I mean, it's not something you want to do, and you never want to say the wrong thing, but you really need to be able to listen to the people who it has offended. You know, and I'm thinking the majority of Ram is not of that, you know, is not in that demographic. So we need to open ourselves to all community members, everybody that comes forward, and I hope Ram takes the opportunity to learn from this and just do better. And to include the students. I think I read in the minutes that the students feel like they're left out, and your students are the brightest minds there, so why not engage them and get them involved as well? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online that would like to present public comment? Raise a digital hand for Eric, and he'll let me know. No one? Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. All right. That moves us on to item five. Can I look at your adjusted piece? So the, there is one piece that would like to entertain a motion to add to our letter of intent to retire portion of the agenda, which is item 9.2. If we could add the letter of intent to retire from Linda Thurber Lund to the consent agenda. She, we got that notice just a little bit later than when we had sent out the initial agenda, so, like I said, I'll underhand a motion to add that. Okay? Any second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Do a voice vote. All in favor? All right. Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, that carries unanimously, so we'll go ahead and add that if you could discipline me to remember to do that. Thank you. All right, that moves us on. Is there any other additions or deletions to the agenda item? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to the student representative reports. Rowan, you are up.
All right. So I just, first, I just wanted to congratulate the Ram music department for another successful winter concert. And this was kind of, I want to say this was the first one, at least from my perspective, that was kind of like really back to normal, like, you know, less mess wearing, everybody was, you know, crowding together, you know, to celebrate the holiday season in the form of the excellent music that both the chorus and the band performed. And so, yeah, I just wanted to congratulate them on that. And then I also just wanted to kind of cover, like, the Spirit Week that's happening this week, because obviously with it, with it being the holiday season, a lot of kids are, you know, excited to express their holiday spirit. So we had a successful holiday headwear day today. Tomorrow's holiday movie character day. Wednesday's flannel day. Thursday is holiday, ugly sweater day, and Friday's holiday PJ day. So there will be a lot of holiday spirit throughout the week. It's exciting.
Where's your headwear?
I had, no, I did not participate.
I would have worn my Yankee cap if I had not.
I mean, I, a lot of people asked me to wear my Buddy the Elf costume tomorrow that I have, so I will be participating in that one.
Maybe joined by my son, so.
But not this one. No, I don't really have a lot of holiday headwear, so.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Definitely, I was going to highlight on that, too. Everyone's very enthused about that. Also, the winter sports, everyone is getting into the winter sports. I've heard a lot of people talking about indoor track, swim team, hockey. Also, I would also like to point out there are a lot of tests happening. A lot of students are feeling very anxious about that. Definitely, this year, because of COVID, the midterms are back, and everyone's definitely feeling that air of anxiety about that for after winter break, so we'll see how that goes.
Good point. Great. Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Having concluded student representative reports, we'll move on to the chair report. So our last meeting included some clear feedback from a variety of stakeholders as part of the public comment regarding concerns of the culture here at Ram, and that carries through this evening. You know, concerns have been voiced publicly, both in the, you know, the River East, and I think in just in general conversations that I've heard, about, you know, the potentially the events being swept under the rug. Our superintendent can provide you all, and I'm confident he will, with a much more detailed accounting of the action items and next steps that have been taken to date. But what I can tell you is that Mr. McNamara and the administration take this very seriously. They've engaged with multiple resources and organizations at every opportunity in the very short time since the events have unfolded. They've met with the town leaders and organized to strategize community-based approaches, and will pursue the facts and follow through on the needs of our students and staff. This is not a small task, and it will take time, but they are committed to doing what is necessary, as is the board. Tonight, we also held our Board of Education Officers' elections, and as a parent of these kids in this school system, I'd like to thank the members who selflessly volunteered to accept additional duties on top of the significant time and energy sacrifices all of our members already make, between regular meetings, additional budget meetings, professional development, subcommittee meetings, what we've come to understand as something called a non-meeting, which we've also participated in. Volunteering to be on the board is not a small commitment, and I'm very honored to serve with all the members of this board. While there's always work to do, it's also important that we take time to recognize and applaud achievement. And so it's my pleasure on behalf of the board, and Rowan almost stole some of my thunder, but I think I have a little bit of info I can throw out there to kind of capitalize on what he was saying, but to congratulate the 11 Ram middle school students who were recently accepted into the Eastern Connecticut Honors Music Ensemble. The students were selected for the ensemble after auditioning for a judge, and one of the students, and I'm just going to apologize because names, I am terrible with them, I'm embarrassed by it, but I'm going to try my best, I believe her, the name is Amaya Ramos, attended the high honor, attained the high honor achievement of a perfect score, which is just incredible. It's awesome. So leading the way for Ram and music as usual, and I think, I think there's.
We got to update that.
There's insignia all over the place, just attesting to the awesome music program we have here. Really glad to see that it's carrying on. It's also my honor, it's on behalf of the board, to applaud our Ram music department. Ram has been recognized again as a district that is one of the best communities for music education in 2022. This ward recognizes outstanding efforts by teachers, administrators, parents, students, community leaders, who have made music part of a well-rounded education. Ram is just one of 738 districts across the country, across the country, to receive this recognition this year. Last week's winter contest concert, as Rowan alluded to, showcased the talents of our high school musicians, and we look forward to the middle school concert, which I anticipate is in January. Is that right? Yeah. So if everybody gets a chance to participate in that as well. Ram football hit a milestone this year in that they qualified for the state playoff competition for the first time in Ram football history, which is a pretty significant achievement, especially for a school our size. Exceptional hard work, and I would congratulate the coaching staff on the team on their hard work and their stellar performance on the football field this year. Finally, it's also my honor on behalf of the board to recognize and congratulate the Ram volleyball team for winning their second consecutive state championship. We wanted to recognize the team tonight at the board meeting, but all those stellar athletes are all involved in other athletics now, and so there was enough of a conflict that we wouldn't have had the majority of the team here, and so it wasn't a very good option. We hope to have them join us at our January meeting, and hopefully that'll work out so that we can recognize and applaud them in person. And finally, I'd be remiss as a retired Army officer if I didn't include a safety brief. It's just something we do. As the holiday season and the winter break is upon us, the Ram Board of Education asks the students, staff, and the community to have a safe, restful, happy holiday. to have a safe, restful, happy holidays and come back to us in the new year ready to get after it. All right, uh, that is item seven, which moves us on to item eight, the report of the superintendent.
Thank you very much. Uh, just in the, in the theme of music recognition, one thing that didn't get, uh, mentioned was Friday night was, I think it was the first of a, uh, it was a karaoke fundraiser, I think by the, uh, Music Honor Society. Rowan, you know it's coming, right?
Yeah, I know.
And, um, so I was here, there was, it was a busy evening. So there was the karaoke, uh, karaoke for students in the cafeteria and staff as well. We had a dance at the middle school, which was always, it brought me down memory lane, going back to a middle school dance, and maybe not in a good place down memory lane. Uh, we also had a girls' basketball game that night, but, uh, Rowan, not once Taylor Swift song, not two, three, great job, great job. It was fantastic.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah.
I think you really appreciate you bringing it up.
I was, yeah, you did, yes.
Told him, I said, Rowan.
That's why I kind of didn't want to bring it up during my thing, because like, I was.
It was, it was a great night to be here. There's a lot of activity and, and it's just, it's great to have the energy in the building. But, um, in, in, in all seriousness, I want to begin tonight by providing insight. Um, and you alluded to, uh, Chair Morris, to the, to the work that's been happening in response to the incident on November 18th. There's, this has been an extremely challenging time for the Ram community. And I want to be sure that the board and the community are aware of what has been taking place over the past few weeks. In the wake of the incident, there have been several reports of other things experienced by Ram students that have been investigated using the lens of the board's non-discrimination policy. In each case, school administration has thoroughly investigated what has been reported and taken appropriate action based on their findings. This will continue to be the response if new information is brought to the attention of the administration. What we are experiencing here at Ram is not uncommon, as significant widely-publicized events also often serve as a catalyst for others to come forward and share their experiences. We have also been considering a long-term response that will help ensure Ram is a place where all students and families feel welcome, accepted, and valued. To that end, I have engaged with several organizations and individuals who focus on this work. I've participated in meetings with representatives from the State Department of Education, leaders from local and state organizations, and other consultants to discuss a well-planned, thoughtful, and appropriate approach to responding. One consistent recommendation stemming from these meetings has been to engage both students and staff in focus groups that will help better identify areas of need. Information from these conversations will enable the district to make more informed decisions and develop long-term plans. The other recommendation I have consistently heard is to implement a program for students that focuses on the port, the importance of an inclusive school environment. To that end, an agenda item for tonight's meeting is to introduce Joelle Murchison. Ms. Murchison has been a tremendous resource for the district over the past several weeks. She has a wealth of experience helping school districts and organizations navigate the challenges that can be associated with recognizing and valuing the diverse perspectives in creating a more inclusive school environment. I look forward to having Ms. Murchison speak later this evening with the board about the work that she does and can do for us. Today, I had the good fortune to attend the high school staff meeting. Dr. Bragel invited me to come to the staff meeting this afternoon, and it was, it could have been one of the best experiences I've had here at Ram. It was alumni, it was 12 alumni, I believe it was 12, who, who, who spoke about their experiences here in the district and, and how their experiences have prepared them for life beyond high school. While each school, while each student had their own, or while each alumni, I should say, had their own unique experiences as students, there were consistent themes. The alumni spoke about how their experiences at Ram prepared them for life after high school. They explained how they learned the value of hard work while being students here at Ram, and that they knew their teachers cared about them. And one thing that they'll, I'll mention just based off of your comment about the anxiety you're feeling about midterms, a couple of them said they wished early on, when they're in their high school career, they had just relaxed a little bit because they realized that they brought too much stress and too much anxiety and too much tension on them. So take those words of advice. Absolutely, go get through it. I know the teachers and staff in attendance appreciated hearing from these alumni as much as I did, and I appreciate being invited. And this concludes my report.
Okay. Moves us on to item number nine, the consent agenda. Uh, approval of the minutes from the November 21st, 2022 meeting, which is, uh, labeled as enclosure number nine point one. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the November 21st meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Hey Joe, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Heather. Any discussion regarding the, uh, minutes? Hearing none, do a voice vote. All in favor of a motion to approve the minutes from the November 21st meeting? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
Want to abstain? Okay, so, thank you. Okay. All right, that brings us to item nine point, I'm sorry, that, uh, vote carries. It moves on to item nine point two, the retirement notifications. And this is where, uh, we'll add to, based on the, or, and the item four, I'm sorry, uh, five addition that was voted on by the board, we will add to the names for.
Linda Thurber Lund.
Thurber. Lund. Okay, so, uh, as part of item, uh, nine point two, uh, is there a motion to accept the upcoming retirements of, and I apologize for names again, Joyce Lacavelli and Paul Bancroft and Linda Thurber Lund. Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, thank you. Uh, is there any discussion?
I do have one question.
Yes.
On Paul that says January 2024, that's correct?
That is, that is correct. So Mr. Bancroft was timed enough to give us ample motivation on his retirement, even though he's not really required to give it to us so early. His position is going to be a very, his position is very unique. He manages and oversees a very unique program. And I will tell the board it's going to be challenging to replace Mr. Bancroft because of the unique certifications he has and the programs that he teaches. So he's been communicating with Dr. Bragel and I about, about his upcoming retirement that he wanted to provide us, which we appreciate very much.
Yes, yeah, that's going to be very hard. Big loss for us. But 2024 is accurate, I think.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I'll just take this opportunity, as I read through those notes, to identify that those are 20-plus-year veteran educators that have spent the majority or all of their career here at Ram. And, uh, I can't thank them enough. I've, I've had, got three kids now, and one's already gone through. So I'm sure has had, uh, been the benefactor of, uh, beneficiary of one of those three or all three. And, uh, I think that, you know, hitting that 20-year mark and especially being able to provide all that time here at Ram, can't thank you enough and really appreciate, uh, all of your service to our community.
Let's have a quick question.
Yeah.
Linda Thurber Lund was also a long-serving, uh, teacher here at Ram. Okay, thank you.
All right, that being said, uh, if there's no other discussion, do a voice vote. Uh, motion to accept the upcoming retirements of Joyce, one more time, Lacavelli, Paul Bancroft, Linda Thur, and Linda Thurber Lund. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, which moves us on to item 10, old business. Uh, I don't have anything on the agenda. Is there anything that you need? Okay. Which moves us on to item number 11, new business, and 11.1, um, Joelle Murchison, consultant from EMG.
Sure, so I, I would again like to thank Joelle Murchison for joining us tonight. She is the founder of EMG, a consulting group for businesses, education, and nonprofits. Ms. Murchison, as I said, has proven to be a valuable resource to, to myself, the administrative team in the district over the past several weeks. And I feel that she can help us navigate the challenges that we're currently facing. And I appreciate you taking the time to mention it.
Thank you so much, Dr. McNamara, for the invitation. Thank you for all of being here this evening. Uh, it's interesting, as I shared with Dr. McNamara, probably 20-ish years ago, um, as a much younger person, I actually came to Ram to facilitate a program, um, an assembly that the Anti-Defamation League used to run. False names can really hurt us. And I understand that Ram adapted that program and created something very similar to allow students the opportunity to really have their voices heard around school community. Um, so it's a little ironic, um, that 20-plus years later, I stand here in front of you again, as we as a society sort of reimagine some of these issues that are in front of us in a very different way, in a way where we communicate, uh, across social media lines without sitting in front of one another, where we learn a lot about people or what we think we know about people, and we use that to inform the way we behave. Um, or we don't know enough about people, and we act and respond in ways that may not be accurate. Um, we have a real opportunity, certainly here in this district, more broadly, in society, to begin talking, um, to one another, to take opportunities to learn from one another, to hear individuals, um, from their voices. Uh, I've been in this work for most of my career. It was not intended, in fact, when I was in high school, I said I wanted to be the Secretary of Education of the United States because at that time, I grew up in a district where the high school was about, um, about half the size of Ram, actually about 520 students. But it was made up of similar, similarly to Ram, three distinct communities. Two communities who are predominantly white and one community that was predominantly black. At the time in New York State, it was considered the most racially balanced school district in the state. Um, and yet it's interesting because as I reflect back, many of my classmates will speak to the fact that we had deep, um, intentional engagement with one another, visiting each other's homes, understanding each other's cultures. And so as we grew, um, into adults, we oftentimes reflect on those experiences. Things are different now, right? We don't necessarily visit people in their homes. We visit people on social media. We visit people through, um, articles that we read or documentaries and things of that nature. We don't have the capacity to really engage in meaningful dialogue. That's where I think some of the work that I've done over time with a number of different districts, private and public sector institutions, and higher education would really be helpful here at Ram. Um, you heard earlier, um, Dr. McNamara talk about the importance of, uh, focus groups. Um, and I think one of the public comments talked about leveraging the teachers, the students, the school community here. Um, what we've seen, right? Even in those people moments, it's like, you're supposed to have something to say, right? Um, and so had it not been for this incident, which I know, I'm sure none of you would have liked to have the, 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 um, public, um, spotlight on you in the way that it has, it really has created an opportunity to leverage those here who have a voice, who want something, want to see, um, the school community impacted, um, both students and teachers. So we're really, uh, suggesting an opportunity to conduct some focus groups with students and teachers to understand, get a better understanding, some of what Dr. McNamara and his colleagues have been hearing from students because they are now coming forward, even teachers who are coming forward about different incidents that they have either been a part of or that they've witnessed, um, to really get a sense of what's going on here. What are not only the challenges, but what are the strengths within this district? And to use that information to really help shape a plan to allow the district to move forward, really intentionally, create a space for everyone within the school, school community to be involved. We also would recommend, um, some programming, um, for students, right? Because I think there are students and, uh, teachers and families who are saying, so what's happening? When are you going to tell us what's going to happen next? You know, will there be another incident? How do we get ahead of it? So we're creating a space for students to begin the learning. Now, we talked about actually even, how might we make that available to the broader community, right? Um, we want to be deliberate and start very intentionally, one step at a time. And so there are organizations, fortunately, here in the community that have stepped up and said they want to partner and that they can provide some of those community spaces. But as we talk, as we talk about this district and Ram, I think the focus is with here and what you'll do within this particular school community to provide opportunities for folks to learn one another. Uh, I've been doing since, um, 2020, um, really the result of George Floyd and all of the sort of awareness around injustice in this country. Um, a series of sessions that are entitled A Courageous Conversation on Race. What have I learned in the past two, almost three years? Well, what I've learned is that many of us actually have no idea what race really means. Most of us don't even know what diversity, equity, or inclusion mean. Instead, we respond based upon what we think they mean, and we fill in the blanks based upon what we heard, or perhaps what we don't know, as opposed to really taking the opportunity to, to uncover some of the facts. How did we get here? Why is it that we don't know much about individuals who might have a different skin complexion than us? Or other dimensions of diversity that have impact within our society and certainly within our district? So really beginning with a concept of, what are the facts? What do we need to know? Where are their opportunities for us to learn? And then let's talk about feelings, because not everybody feels the same. Not everyone has the same experiences. In fact, many of us have not had proximity to be able to have, quite frankly, a really informed, um, opinion about some of the things that happen in our world and we're expected to react to right away. So moving from the facts and thinking about our feelings, what does that look like? How does that play out? And then our future stuff. So what do we do now? Where do we go from here? Um, what are deliberate actions that can be taken in this district? Not one-size-fits-all. The work that I've done has always been very customized with districts to really partner with them to understand what makes sense here. Um, I said to, um, another, the other day, oh, you know, we tried to, you know, uh, put photos on our website with people who, you know, look different than us. And I said, well, why force something if that's not who you are? Let's uncover the diversity that exists within your community, right? So let's begin to talk about that and, and think about what implications that has more broadly. Um, that session really has created a space for people to use as a launching pad, right? Then how do we create more and more opportunities for dialogue? Um, this is not really something that can happen overnight. Oftentimes, as someone who has spent most of my career as Chief Diversity Officer Travelers for a decade, I was the inaugural Chief Diversity Officer at UConn. And oftentimes folks think that you can wave a magic wand and everyone will be fit overnight. We'll all be friends and we can hold our hands and then go by yah. And it doesn't work anymore, right? Because we all have spent some time in this game, and it takes some time to unlearn what we have been taught or what we've embraced on our own. In many instances, because we just don't know what we don't know. And so it really is, I think personally, about one-on-one relationships, dialogue between individuals, and literally one step at a time. And so that's really what I would suggest for Ram. I don't think that in terms of, you know, there are clearly others out there who would tell you that if you do this and check the box, this will, you know, sort of make this the, the most diverse and include the district on earth. I don't know that I could promise you that, right? By tomorrow or by next year, even by, you know, um, next year, next week, next year, right? Um, which will be here shortly. But I think the important piece is really being deliberate about starting and starting somewhere and acknowledging that you don't know everything, and that guess what? Along the way, you actually might even make some mistakes. But that's all a part of the learning process. You talk about that in your mission statement for the district. Uh, so I, I'm really pleased that actually, um, Dr. McNamara and I got to know each other on a Saturday morning, really, really early, when I answered the phone not realizing that it was Saturday. And I didn't have to answer my business line, but that's when we talked and engaged for the first time. Um, and so when I made the connection to Ram, to me, um, it was really worth the, the work, right? Um, and being able to challenge. We've had, you know, some conversations where I'll say, no, I don't know. And they'll say to me, well, I'm like, hmm, I don't know, let's push a little further. And I think that's what this is about. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. There is a proposal that, um, Dr. McNamara received from us, which really is a, a little bit more detail about what I just described. Um, there are lots of other things that we could do. Uh, but for me, at this point, I think it really does make sense to really get some information from folks who are in the school community and then take deliberate steps to figure out what makes sense. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. You probably Googled me, um, for this, so if there's anything I can answer for you.
Go ahead, sir.
Um, you brought up feelings. And it is really to ensure that everyone is allowed to share their feelings in a safe environment. How would you ensure that that happens while they're in these groups together? Or, you know, to say, I mean, what's feelings are different on this topic.
Absolutely. Uh, so one of the things that we do in all of our sessions is we start out in two ways. One, doing a check-in, just getting a sense of how people are feeling one more. How are you feeling in this moment, right? Because realistically, even as you walked into this room, whatever was happening before you came in, it's always present in your mind. So whatever you're hearing, you're hearing through the lens of whatever you're feeling. So getting a sense of how people are feeling initially. Then we also lead with a set of guidelines or guidelines, which you probably know more familiar with that term, that really sets the framework for how the discussion will operate. One of those things is about using I statements. Now, one of the things that I think really kind of disarms a lot of, um, when people will express a feeling, they'll talk about it as we always, or this is what we've always done in this district, what I've always, you know, and really encourage people to use I, right? One, that means you have to think about, do you really feel that way as you're saying it? But also allowing others to. But also allowing others to really think and reflect about how they feel, right? So not speaking for everyone, speaking just for you, right? Um, and sometimes that's harder, but it also means that you can only talk about the experiences you had and not what you've heard, right? So that brings it down to how you're really feeling. Um, with those ground rules, we'll constantly refer back to them. And then should we, particularly in the, the focus groups, they'll be relatively small groups, really well-staffed. When we do a broader student assembly, there will always be a partnership with you, which probably will look something like you've done um with the program that's done at the middle school, where there are rooms where students can exit, staff can exit, um, be able to take a moment, right? And have someone there to sort of help them process through something that might be particularly painful for them at that time. Um, so we really do try to work very intentionally. Um, certainly, we will look to, to have students who partner um with their colleagues, with their peers um in the, in the student assembly component. Um, but that's really important is really ensuring that there's safety and really setting an, an expectation for it in the larger group setting.
Thank you.
I, I have a question about the execution. You're talking primarily about focus groups, which I think are a great format for open discussion, honest discussion. Are you talking about students and staff? Are teachers mixed in together? Do the students get an opportunity maybe just to join groups that are mostly just students? So for some reason.
Yes, we actually talk about separate groups of students and staff.
Okay.
You know, recognizing that there are some staff who've had some, either their own experiences with this work or as they, you know, had volunteered here in the district, we want to hear from them. Students absolutely in a separate group. Um, we're hoping that there's students that may have responded to the note that went out from the principal saying, you know, hey, we're working on this and raised their hands, that, you know, count me in. Um, but certainly giving an opportunity to additional students to do that.
Thank you.
Hello, any questions?
No.
Sure. Oh, um, okay. Kirsten, Katie, Eric. So the only thing I would say is I don't want to embarrass uh Ms. Mursin, uh, but I did take an opportunity to read through your, your website and uh, your education is uh, is intimidating, to say the least. Um, but the, so the one thing I would just say is that as listening to what you presented, one of the things that I think I've heard in our community is uh, you know, people uh certainly concerned about an underreaction. And uh, I think, you know, there's also people that are worried about an overreaction. And I thought some of what you discussed about tailored approaches and uh doing factual assessments. And I think that all is very important to, you know, kind of, number one is swaging everybody's kind of concerns and fears. Look, it'd be remiss if we didn't look around the country and say that these are some subjects that are board of education and communities in general are, are facing, you know, everywhere. And so there's, and there's, you know, there's some fight between boards of education who maybe don't recognize parents, you know, rights to the extent that uh communities expect them to. And they're, you know, suspicious of anybody that frankly wants to talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion because they're, in some circumstances are, are trigger words. And like I said, it would just be disingenuous not to, not to, to open that, put, you know, add that to the discussion. But I, I do appreciate you coming here and, and talking to us about, you know, the, the proposal that you provided and your approach to it. And I think uh, as one individual board member, I, I feel, I feel, I feel, I feel better about what you. So anyway, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Thanks so much. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item eleven point two, the strategic planning presentation by Eastcon, Diane Deuce.
So as the board knows, the district must engage in uh the strategic planning process this year to have a three-year plan for the start of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Uh, there are individuals and organizations that help districts with this process, with the process of developing a strategic plan. And I met with the finance subcommittee meeting last week to review some of these options that I've explored. Ultimately, the subcommittee felt that the best option for Ram was to work directly with our local rest, Eastcon, on this process. And we are joined tonight by Diane Deuce, Director of K-12 and Leading and Learning for Eastcon, who will briefly explain the process Eastcon utilizes and can use with the district and an anticipated timeline of the work. Thank you, Diane, for joining us.
Thank you. Thank you, Kirsten. We just want to do the work we look forward to embarking on this journey with you. And it really is a, an iterative process in terms of taking a look at Ram's current core values, your mission, your vision, the portrait of a graduate. That really is the foundational work for moving forward and grounding every decision that's made, as you know well, as a board. Uh, really, the purpose of a strategic plan is to serve as a roadmap. As Colin said, in terms of moving forward, um, it should guide your decisions as a board, goals as a board for moving forward. That guides superintendent, to principal, to teachers. There's a through line, the strategic advancement plan as a North Star. Where ultimately do you want to go? So in that process, we do a variety of activities. It really starts, first of all, with um working collaboratively with the superintendent to think about steering committee, a small representative of various stakeholders to really guide the process. In that guiding, um, part of that is planning of what data will be looked at, very similar to what we just heard. We take a look at focus groups, who needs to be, who, what voices need to be heard. Um, we certainly look at students and community members and parents and um staff, as well as the board administration, comprising all of those stakeholders together. What are the, what is the timeframe in terms of timeline? We look at, um, is that in the evening, is that during the day? Uh, we provide multiple opportunities for voice through survey as well as onsite focus groups for that work. We also take a look at the data that needs to be reviewed. We collect a variety of data. The strategic planning team actually then utilizes that. So a broader group of stakeholders, anywhere from eighteen to twenty-five folks. Um, again, broad representation are brought together over the course, again, determined by the steering committee, whether that's Saturday or several evenings, coming together and through protocols of looking at really a swap. What are the district strengths? What are the weaknesses? What are the threats? What are the opportunities? Through those protocols and analyzing data, both internal and external, we put that together. And it is a very smooth process of how we draft goals and then move forward. And then it really results in an action plan. What's the timeline for those goals? Uh, small chunks, we really look at thirty, sixty, ninety days. It should be a really workable document, not something that sits on the shelf. We do something a little bit unique. We create a communication plan as well, with the strategic planning team. Who needs to be communicated with? How? Really thinking, again, there's a difference between what students need to know, parents, what community members, and their role in the plan, because everyone does have a stake in that. So our timeline for those activities, um, as you would provide it, is starting in January and completing by April, by the April vacation, so that it's still a picture of more full setting moving forward and budgetary process. Be ready for communication out to start the following year. Happy to answer any questions.
So just to circle back, as I think, again, just to refresh the board's memory. So we're operating off of what is now a three-year plan that uh landed for renewal in the middle of COVID. And we uh extended that strategic plan for two additional years just to get us on the other side. So it's really somewhat of a elongated three-year plan that is stretched into a five-year plan. And so, you know, as part of our, our edict when hiring our new superintendent was, at the same time, coming on board with the responsibility of, of working towards developing our next three-year strategic plan, uh, which is, you know, centered on what uh, what Diane came to talk to us about. And it, a lot of the bulk of that work, if I'm correct, is the next six months? Four to five months, yeah.
January to April.
Yeah, so um, I think, I had a couple of other comments, but I'll just kind of go around the room first, just to give the board an opportunity to ask any questions. Anybody? Question?
The plan that we have in place, it worked very well with the community members and who we had involved. We'd be looking at that and who we involved and comparing what we're doing, what we did and what we're doing, what we're going to do.
Absolutely. So one of the pieces will be the data of your last strategic plan in terms of taking a look at that. But then the community and stakeholders will be determined by a steering committee. So that committee will be comprised of who you choose that to be and who you think is important for that, as well as the strategic planning team, which is a larger group that do go through the process. And again, that's based on the dynamics of Ram and who you think is important to be part of.
That's great, because I, I believe everyone felt heard when we went through this process. And that's really.
Just to pick up on a question you asked of the previous presenter and trust. We use protocols around consensus building and we also use codes of collaboration. So when we start the process, we identify our working norms together and then also um do a consensus protocol so that, again, every voice is heard.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions? So I don't necessarily have a question, but more a comment and just kind of piggybacking off of Sue talking about stakeholders. I, I have a, you know, what, one of my backgrounds is planning. And I think the best plans that I ever put together was responsible for executing were um centered in developing buy-in from the, you know, we, we say stakeholders, but frankly, the key stakeholders. And I'm really glad that Mr. Spinelli is here as the teacher's rep. Because I, I, you know, I know that we talk about all the stakeholders, the community, the parents, board, administrators. But in, in my opinion, the, the faculty will be, as probably is in almost all circumstances, carrying the lion's share of the load of actually making or breaking any strategic plan that we might put together. And so I think uh, what I would just ask you and also Mr. Spinelli, and I, I know this is, this, you know, something you would want to do, but to really encourage the, the teachers to dig in, um, not only to, you know, volunteer and participate, but also hold your ground. I mean, come in and say, because what I, the tragedy of it would be for us to go through this effort, frankly, spend the money, because it's always in the back of my mind. And uh, and then, and then come out with a plan that doesn't necessarily, it, it, you know, we don't have, you know, the majority or a consensus of those key stakeholders, specifically the faculty, really walking into first year one, year two, year three, feeling really good about not only what are we supposed to accomplish, but now how can we continuously improve it and things of that nature? If we don't have that buy-in, then it's, it's almost a wasted exercise. And I would hate for that to be the case. So uh, I'm really looking forward to all the community members participating, but specifically the faculty. Um, any other questions, comments? I think you love the communication plan.
I love the communication plan.
I can feel that coming from that side of the table. Our resident communications expert, so I'm sure she'll be able to provide some, some feedback on that. Thank you very much for your time.
Look forward to working with all of you.
Appreciate it. All right, so as part of um, that, is that, do we do that presentation now?
I'm here.
Um, sorry, okay. So as part of that uh presentation and uh our strategic planning um, um preparation, uh, we need to entertain a motion to have the superintendent enter into a contract with Eastcon to facilitate the development of the Region Eight strategic plan.
Can we ask how much?
Yeah, absolutely. Why don't we, why don't we get the motion on the board and we'll talk. Move and air a few seconds, okay? Sue, you're recognized for questions.
What is this kind of cost?
Uh, a little over seventeen thousand dollars is what we, with the costs. I could send uh my week, it's okay. I, I sent out the different contracts that were, uh, Eastcon one was one, and then the two other organizations that I solicited.
My bad.
Any other questions?
Yes, sorry.
If I could just make a comment, this is a topic that we discussed in some detail. Finance, so. Eastcon is not the only applicant, but um combination of their timeliness of being available, being able to start right away, and also our longstanding relationship with them, and also coming in reasonably. The, you know, it's kind of the trifecta and.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? Hearing none, do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Yeah, I got that. Uh, yeah, all right, eleven point three. Uh, review and approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year calendar enclosure eleven, enclosure eleven point three. Call anything that.
Yeah, so just the proposed calendar in your board packet is a result of a collaborative effort between the district to compromise, uh, comprise Region Eight. I worked closely with the uh, this superintendent to the other districts. Um, and I would recommend the adoption of this calendar, uh, and I could certainly entertain any questions.
Open the floor for questions on the calendar.
I'll just, I'll say it pretty much, it mirrors the.
It does.
It mirrors the calendar that we've used. In fact, in speaking with um the superintendent Hebron, he said this is probably the most in-sync calendar that we've had with the other districts that, that we've had in a while. We try to do that for, we know that there's a lot of family uh, uh, who, you know, with, obviously with children in multiple districts. We know that there's staff members that live within the community that this has an impact on. So we really made a concentrated effort to sync it up as much as possible.
And it's great, the early dismissal looks so much better than coming in later, so it works.
Okay, any other discussion?
Could I just, out of curiosity?
Yeah.
Why do we do that with Labor Day weekend? Go back to, we go to school for two days and then we, and then it's a long weekend.
It's a question that I've had for years. It's just, that's, that's the way that generally the calendars in the states i- in, in this area start, is starting prior to Labor Day and then having that long weekend. It's just, the, the calendar, what we're trying to do is we try to sync up with the other districts that are within our community. That's just historically what's been done, not just in this area across the state. I mean, it's, it's a very typical way of approaching. Um, anecdotally, I think that there's a lot of people that appreciate having a couple of days in having, Rowan is a student, I think is acknowledging it too. You start off with a couple of days, you can, and then you have a long weekend and hit the ground running on the day after.
I'll be honest, Heather, I, I've looked into this before and did some research. And I think I brought it up to Scott, this was years ago, because the calendar isn't, isn't the same in the state of Connecticut. It's different, but in our area, it is the same. But I always felt like, why do we do this? And some districts outside of our area start after. But, you know, um, when Scott tells me, Sue, it's a losing battle, I try to think in my head, do I want to fight this?
Yes.
Take my own, and this is, this isn't one that I try to take further, but I have really did some homework and researched this. And um, our area sticks with this. And if we were, if we were to say, as a board, to change this, it would literally impact, you know, all of our three towns.
Right, yeah, it's not something I would fall on the sword for, I, but I just, I find it completely irritating, but. It's, you know, it's fine. Again, it's not something, I was just curious if there was some sort of urban lore behind it or.
The, the thing, the thing that I will say is um, some districts have actually gone down the route of starting actually earlier. So they get in, uh, just this past year, I think Glastonbury District, and Christine's nodding her head, I know she's a resident there. And some other districts, I believe more so in the Hartford area, actually started, they did a full week. So they did their professional development days in the week leading up to the week before Labor Day weekend. And then they get a full day of, full week of school in, then they have a three-day weekend. And there's a big part of it too, I think, for that, for the movement in that direction is because of the fact that there have been some years where we've had so much snow and so much cancellation. So I think the idea of starting at that weekend before Labor Day is also to accomplish the idea of not eking into, you know, getting up to the end of June.
Yeah, deep into June.
If you have snow days. And this, and, and I'll say this, I have no problem saying this in a public recorded meeting, the state doesn't waiver on their one-hundred-and-eighty-day requirement in any way. We, we've actually had, I know of districts that have literally gone to June thirtieth and not accomplished their one-hundred-and-eighty days. And their school districts have been forced, it doesn't, oh, nope, that's only one-hundred-and-seventy-nine, you've got to do another day in order for it to count as a school year. The state is archaic in their thinking with regards to their requirement to like, oh, one-hundred-and-eighty days is this magical number. I'm not saying there's not a value to having obviously a set number of school days, but respectfully, there's not a lot of work being done in schools on June thirtieth, if schools actually, there just is not.
But there are, there are more options today than there were before, you know, now that we have experienced COVID and we have gone remote. You know, if we were ever getting down to that, down to the wire, you know, we could think about, oh, a snow day, could we do it remotely? Or, you know, I know none of the parents, I think we were up against one year, possibly eating into April vacation and that turned into a big nightmare. Thank God we didn't have to do that, but that was a discussion that I had, we had a face as a board too as well. But there are other options, but it's not a sword that I'm.
Yeah, it's, it was a curiosity question, I'm not.
Healthy conversation though, just to understand.
Uh, uh, and I, what you're saying, the idea. And I, what you're saying, the idea of saying, hey, listen, we did hybrid and we did this, that is, oh, you should be the commissioner of education. I know Joel talked about aspirations and that, but, but that is not permissible. That is, they, they have said to us, you, that doesn't count. It needs to be days in school. So after doing virtual learning for, you know, and I'm not saying virtual learning is an ideal platform. But after doing virtual learning for a four month period at the end of 2020 and then doing it in a hybrid fashion for a substantial portion of the year of the 2020, 21 school year, that's not permissible. It's, which just is my thought.
Yeah, that is.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't want that.
No, of course, of course.
If we were getting down to the end of June, that's crazy. Right?
I totally.
I would just say the Morris boys, it's not the worst thing in the world for them to get a taste of two days and then have a weekend to reacquamanize. But is there any other questions or concerns about the schedule? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Joe. No, come on.
Just the one day that stands out is December 6th. All the other professional development days on Fridays are about days off. Why is that one on just a Wednesday by itself?
Great question. And I'm going to be honest with you, in the first iteration of, of this, we actually had it on a Friday. One of the things that I was really trying to accomplish was to have it be as aligned as possible with the elementary schools. And the elementary schools for that particular month had it on the sixth. I spoke with the administrative team and it really, they said, you know, we've done them before and I'm not on a Friday. And there's actually, if, if the elementary school has an early closing on a day where we do, don't have an early closing and vice versa, it, it creates a transportation issue on both of those days. So to me, a Friday versus doing it on Wednesday, but negate that transportation issue, it made the most sense to do it on that Wednesday.
I think some of those professional days, teachers travel across different schools and, okay. Particularly some, sometimes for particular professional subjects, topics, I think there's been some discussion, but I, I thought that came up last year. Anyway, okay. I'm sorry, Kristen.
My observation was also about the professional days. I understand the sentiment about covering the afternoons versus mornings. What's the backstory and discussion regarding budding those Friday afternoons up to typically long weekends, three day weekends? Because, and has there been any research into absenteeism on those days because families get a morning begins? And those days become less active to make student anticipation for you again.
I can't answer the backstory portion of it. I can tell you that I certainly can understand somebody expresses that concern. I haven't looked at the data for this year to see what the level of absenteeism is. I.
Might be something that might be interesting. I'm afraid that those days don't end up very centered because of the holiday.
Sure, sure.
Okay. So I don't have that much left. So 11.3, is there, is there any other discussion about calendar? I'm sorry.
The last day of school is shown the 11th and I assume that's show days. And also I remember from last year that we get voted at some point about what day it's graduation day. Once the seniors go to graduation, they will not go to school after that. So there's a little painsmanship involved. We'll cross that bridge when we get to.
I'm sorry, Gabe, did you have a question?
Oh, no.
Okay. All right. If there's no other discussion about the calendar or any concerns, entertain a motion to approve the 2023, 2024 school year calendar as enclosed in 11.3. Thank you, Heather. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Joe. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a voice vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. Which brings us to 11.5, the annual review of policy 4180. I'm probably working on a start. Sorry. Okay. So I'm sorry, 11.4, the proposed 2023 Board of Education meeting dates.
So saying the calendars, the, in your packet is the proposed 2023 board meeting dates. And essentially what we've done is we follow the same format that we are using for the 2022 year. So I could certainly take any questions if you'd like.
I just know last year when we came to this discussion, it was, I think a couple of the old, old school board members came up and said, hey, pushing the June meeting as early as it can be and pushing the August meeting as far back as can be. And obviously we don't have a July meeting was something that was beneficial to many supporting, especially supporting people's vacation plans and things of that nature. So I did mention to Colin that as part of the framework for that, we'd like to try and especially could accomplish that. So any other questions or concerns about schedule? I think frankly, it's almost the exact same footprint as the year before. All right.
Your budget workshop, separate.
So, yeah, separate proposed. With the exception of the district budget meeting from May first.
June 19th is a holiday, right?
It's, it's, Juneteenth was identified as a state holiday. It was not, the board would have to make a decision if it's not identified as a day that we wouldn't have school, it's ultimately up to districts to make a determination whether they want Juneteenth to be something that would they be recognized as a holiday.
Even if it was recognized as a holiday, it wouldn't necessarily prevent us from having the board meeting. It would be a school issue.
Right, schools. Correct. Yeah.
Okay. I don't know. Is there, is there a concern for the June 19th meeting?
Um, optics?
I, I think it's appropriate. I think it's a reasonable discussion. I mean, what's the, what's the previous Saturday? I mean, I'm sorry, the previous Monday? I mean. Is that right?
So the.
This Monday would be.
The 12th. Oh, I'm looking at, sorry.
Or not. I did the same thing.
Would be the, wait, that's not even the 19th.
12 is the previous Monday.
Yeah. Oh, 2024. I'm sorry. That's why.
So it would be.
Yeah, wins are, wins supposedly are less vague.
16.
We just would have to, we'd have to be cautious about potential graduation dates. I'm seeing my high school president nodding her head. And then in our middle school, we have middle school ceremonies. So, you know, it's just, it's just something we'd have to be, be conscientious of. But, but I agree with the optics.
And I think as we're going into this whole experience of, you know, what are we going to look like as a community?
Yeah. I mean, look, I'm all for the earlier in June. Does anybody have any significant emotion about moving it back or moving it up? I guess is the right way to say that. What's the, what is the previous day? I mean, the, the fifth or the 12th. Which I, you're saying from the 12th perspective, that would complicate things at the school? Would we do it on a Monday though?
Yeah, we can add a day in the week if it's the last day of the week.
What is expected to be the last day of school?
I have the 13th. Is that accurate though?
I have, I have that as well. I have the 13th as the last day of final. Oh, yeah. 12 is the last day, so we can.
Right. So the 12th would be safe.
I, I like the 12th Saturday because I don't want to go into it without the financials, especially heading into a summer where we're going to skip a meeting for one month. Okay. So maybe make the adjustment. So let's adjust the motion then, motion to approve the 2023 meeting dates for the Board of Education with the one proviso that we moved the January of the June 19th meeting to the June, to the date of June 12th. Is there a motion for that? Thank you. Is there a? Thank you, Gabe. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a voice vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. All right. All right. 11.5, the annual review of policy 4180, plan for minority staff recruitment, enclosure 11.5.
So policy 4180 focuses on minority staff recruitment. One aspect of the policy is that it is reviewed annually by the board each year. There is no action that needs to be taken tonight regarding this policy. We did have a policy subcommittee meeting. We went, we went through this policy. We discussed this policy. There was no recommended changes that were made for this policy, but again, it, it's a provision of the policy that it be reviewed annually by the board. And I can certainly take any questions if board members have.
Only thing I would throw in there is that while we're engaging potentially EMG with some feedback, it certainly wouldn't be the worst thing in the world to ask them to take a look at that, provide any feedback. Without any additional charge. Any other questions?
We don't use a recruiting firm, do we?
We don't. No.
Nope.
Hosting.
Yeah, we post their, their job fairs that do come up and there are certainly, so there's something called the REST Alliance, which specifically focuses on, they have minority, well, pre pandemic, they had very robust minority recruitment job fairs, which I attended annually in my previous position. And certainly if they bring them back to, to life post pandemic, then I certainly would plan on doing those. But now it's basically, it would be myself, other administrators going out to recruiting opportunities and group fairs.
Okay. There's no item, no action item on that. So if there's any other discussion on it, we'll move on to 11.6, the first reading of policy 6156, which is addressing enrollment in an advanced course or program in challenging curriculum.
So as Chairman Morse alluded to, so there, there's a policy 60, 6156 for a first read. This is something that we wouldn't take any action on this evening as a first read of a policy. It's just an opportunity to review it, see if there's any questions, any concerns about it. This policy is another new requirement resulting from recent legislative changes and follows the model policy provided to us by Shippin and Goodwin. It was reviewed by the middle school and high school administration as well as the guidance department's coordinators. And this is a policy that was reviewed, discussed by the board's policy subcommittee meeting at its last, subcommittee at its last meeting. And I can certainly take any questions that I'll just say anecdotally, this is a, this is really kind of setting in place some things that were already in existence here within the district. We're, we're very fortunate being so interconnected that our students at all levels, middle school students have opportunities to take very challenging courses, often in the middle school, and if, if, if the needs arise to come up to the high school, it'll take some, take some challenging courses if it fits within their, within their aptitude. And, and this just really memorializes something that again, was in existence here in the district, probably wasn't exist, was not in existence in other school districts, but it's legislatively required now that we have.
Any comments from the policy committee? Anything that came up that's? Okay. Great. Okay. So there is no action on that tonight either. So we'll move on to 11.7, the ratification of the administrators' union contract.
So earlier this evening, the board had a chance to review and discuss the tentative agreement reached through the negotiations process between the Board of Education, our subcommittee negotiation subcommittee and the RAM Administrators Association. The agreement has been ratified by the administrators group and I recommend that the board do the same.
Okay. So we just asked, is there an opportunity, would somebody entertain a motion to approve the administrator's union contract? Eric, thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Heather. Is there any discussion? Yeah. I just want to make sure we open up the opportunity. I'll get the evil eye from Sue. Hearing no, none, the, we'll have a voice vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries unanimously. Which brings us to item 11.8, the overview of items likely to impact the 2023, 2024 FY budget closure 11.8.
Just going to give Eric a moment to put up on the screen for those attending virtually. So I'll just say, I'll start by saying it's been an educational experience going through the budget process in my first years as superintendent. And I want to thank Eva, who has been incredibly patient with a myriad of really, really probably stupid questions that I've asked her on almost a daily basis for the past several months. I also want to thank the administrative team for, for showing the same patience on many, many occasions and spending lots of time with me and discussing budget, the budget process. You know, this is obviously a, a big undertaking and in my first years, I want to make sure that I do it to the, to the standard that the board is used to and that, and that the district deserves. You go to the next slide, please. So just to set a context, we do a board of education policy that identifies that at this meeting, the, the board superintendent shall, will, will go over some budget, some of the things that are going to impact the budget to discuss any new programs or items that to be included in the, to be included in the proposed budget as well as items that may be deleted. I won't read it word for word. If you go to the next slide, Eric, please. This just provides the, the mission, the vision and theory of action. It's identified in our current strategic plan. Go to the next slide, please. Similarly, these are just the commitments as a part of the strategic plan. I won't read these for people. I find that's insulting when that happens. I'll give you a moment. Eric, if you go to the next slide for me, please. This, I, I will just take a moment to highlight. So this, I, I wanted to provide our enrollment projections, kind of where we were locally. And I didn't do a significant look back. I would anticipate sharing a deeper look back when I do the presentation to board members in January, but I wanted to provide people with the context of where it was, where we were last October of 2021, where our enrollment, October 20, October 1st of each year is a big enrollment number. It's when the state, we provide the state with our enrollment, enrollment numbers for the current year. We were 1,202 students in October of 2021 and in October 1st of 2022, we were down to 1,188 students. I, I provide this context to people because I know that there is a longstanding narrative that RAN has declining enrollment and I'm certainly not arguing that that is not accurate. I just think it's important for the public to know that that enrollment is not a significant drop off in our current, in our current climate. I also want to point out the enrollment projections, these are provided to us annually by NASDAQ. And I think it's important to note that while we will continue to see declining enrollment over the next few years, the upswing does start back up or is projected to, to, to start back up in 20, in the 2027, 2028 school year. We get as low as 1,070 students and then the projections start to swing back up. And you can see that over the course of the next five to six years, it goes back to numbers where we, where we'll be higher than where we are currently. And I just think that's a really important context for us to keep in mind as we go through this budget process and also future budget processes over the next several years. Next slide comes here. So just the budget timeline to date, again, Eva's just been fantastic. You know, she, she's done a lot to develop the timeline. The timeline that we filed this year is, it's, it's, I know that I'm coming to you with it in the middle of December, but please understand that our, our, our staff, our department coordinators, our building administration, our district administration, special education have been living this budget for the past several months. And, and certainly something that has been on the forefront of their minds. We started this process back in October when the, when the budget manual is given out at a fact meeting, which is our department coordinators or administrative team. We review the process and go through that process. One of the things that I did hear when I came in new to the district is, was that the, the process was the department coordinators would sit and collaborate with building administration where they would discuss the needs and the wants of individual departments. And I think that's an excellent process. The one thing that I wanted to do was I actually wanted, not, not in an effort to micromanage, but just to be as educated as I can about the process. I wanted to be a part of those meetings and conversations. And so I had those meetings with the building administration and the department coordinators scheduled with Eva and I. And we sat down as a collective group and I got to hear from each one of the department coordinators. So I, I was hearing firsthand what their needs, what their wants, what their desires were for, for their particular department. At, at a similar time period, I was having conversations with athletic director, the director of people services, director of technology and communication, our facilities director to review their department budget and discuss needs, et cetera. We worked on updating the personnel budget and then we got to the point where we are, to the point where we are right now, which is sharing newer major items to be considered for the proposed budget. So that's currently where we are. That's what we've done to date. Moving forward, we do have some next steps this coming Wednesday. We do have a facility subcommittee meeting so that we can review and prioritize the capital budget for, for next year. I anticipate that. I anticipate that the finance subcommittee meeting, I'm hoping we can work to maybe have that be a joint finance slash facility subcommittee meeting so that we can have a lengthy conversation between the facility subcommittee and the finance subcommittee and discuss the needs of the capital funding. On the 23rd, of course, I'll present the administrative budget to the board of education. For the, the next three items on the budget timeline are to be determined. I know historically that there's been a budget workshop done, obviously for the RAM budget workshop kind of covers the Hebrew needs or covers presenting to the Hebrew community. But my understanding is there's historically been a, we take the show on the road and I think that's been done up until the pandemic hit. And I, I wanted to get an understanding from the board, what the desire of the board was. Cause I think last year that those meetings were done virtually and people were allowed to, they were held here and people were allowed to virtually join those meetings. And I just need to get some direction from the board as far as do we want to do those meetings virtually again this year? Kind of what we were talking about earlier with regards to, you know, if you could do it digitally, is that something that we're desired of doing? Or is it something that we want to actually say, no, we want to again, go back to the towns? Cause we'd have to have some scheduling conversations, which I'm happy to organize, facilitate. But I just need to get some direction from the board on that. Again, we have our, our date identified for our public budget hearing and regenate meeting to set the budget amount for referendum. Annual budget meeting per policy 3121 is going to be on May 1st. And then the budget referendum would be May 2nd. So priorities and budget planning. You know, I, when we looked at the prioritization of needs for the district, we thought it was important to make sure that we support academic and social, more social emotional learning needs of all students, to maintain a program of studies with a variety of course offerings and career pathways that ensure RAM graduates are college and career ready upon graduation. That certainly is something that obviously really resonated with me, particularly after the presentation that I heard today from our RAM alumni. Ensure curriculum and instruction utilized in the district are current and aligned with best practices. You'll see, and if you had a chance to look through this PowerPoint already, when you receive the agenda, you'll see that I'm recommending that a new position be created. My biggest concern is that without having somebody in the district with a very, with a very specific and hyper focus on curriculum and instruction practices, that students will have a different experience here at RAM and differently not a positive way. In the sense of, I, I just think that a district that offers the program of studies that we offer, I think it's really important that we have somebody focusing on curriculum and instruction. We have that with the department coordinators, but our department coordinators also are teaching a portion of their day. And so we'll, we'll talk more about that, but I think that's critically important for the district. Another priority is to improve or maintain facilities and grounds. And last but certainly not least, ensure a safe and secure school environment for students, staff and community. As everyone knows, there's, there's a lot that is factoring. There's, there are many factors that are influencing the budget for 23, 24. This is something that I think that we're going to see in budgets, local and municipal and school district budgets across the state as other districts go into budget season. We just inflation in general, I think we're at seven and a half, we were talking about this earlier, we're around seven and a half percent inflation. And that's, that's going to have a significant impact. You have things of anticipated increase for diesel fuel costs. You have anticipated increase for ever source delivery fees. I'm sure that many of you are tracking that in the news and some that they're looking to double their charges for delivery fees, not the fee for the electricity itself, but just the, just the delivery fees. We're looking at anticipated increases for natural gas. And we know that we're, we already have increases for our software prices that we utilize in the district on a regular basis and we really need to be a functioning district. Unfunded legislative mandates, it's not uncommon that we get those. They, they, they're coming with a fairly hefty price pack. They're good things, certainly don't want to negate their importance. They're, they're, they're good that we have them, but they're, they, they have an impact on the budget. Aging equipment and technology. It's one of the amazing things about coming to this district is how often I'm, people, oh my gosh, that building is so beautiful, that building is so beautiful, it's such a beautiful facility, it's so beautiful. And you know, it's, it's so brand new. And I think that there's a lot of people that think of this building as brand new when in fact it's, it's getting on 20 years old. And when you get on 20 years old, there's aging equipment and technology. We know that capital budget is going to include things like, you know, boilers, chillers, roofing projects, cooling type of thing. But, but those types of things are obviously significantly big ticket items that are going to fall under capital, but there are also things that fall under just our regular operating budget. And I just highlight two of them. It sounds so silly to say this, but a baby grand piano. We, the baby, the grand piano that we utilize, and it's normally in this building or in this, it's normally not going to get moved out for meetings. I think when it was purchased for the building 20 some odd years ago, I think it was already, it had been used for 10 years. They actually got it used. So it's a, we're talking about a 35 year old piano that is aging and warping and starting to show signs. So things like that. And then we have, you know, things like smart board technology, which again is, is being, is becoming outdated rather quickly. And so we're looking to replace things like that with touch screen. So those are just a couple of examples of aging equipment and technology. Special education certainly is always a driver of a budget and it's no different for, for next school year. We do know, sharing of good news, we were looking and anticipating at a decrease in magnet agri science tuition due to student transfers or returning to RAM, which is fantastic. We love it when our students are coming back and we love it even more when our students are returning and it has the opportunity to save some, some funding. Decreasing in outplacement tuition and professional services for students exiting the district. But we do, we are looking at an increase in transportation costs due to driver shortage in diesel. That's the driver shortage is as real as the teacher shortage or the employee shortage in just about every business and industry. And so what we're finding we have to do is transportation services that we typically utilize, whether it's special education or whether it's athletics, we're having to use people that we've never used before because we call one company that say, we can't help you. So we have to go to companies that are more costly, but we don't have a choice in that order because if we don't utilize those companies, we're not going to be able to transport our students to school on a daily basis or to athletic events. And that's just not something we could do. So those are things that obviously we're contending with. Health insurance, I will tell you that it said, what your PowerPoint shows is currently budgeted for a 6% increase. The day after this went to publish and was pushed out to everybody, the insurance consortium met and then it was actually identified to move to a 5% increase. That still could go down and likely will go down. This, this current year that we're working under, it was a 0% increase. So, so, but there's still a little bit of trepidation with the insurance consortium to move lower because it's easier to explain to taxpayers the ability to move down as opposed to, hey, we budgeted for 1%, but guess what? It's really going to be three or four. So where we are right now is because of the consortium of 5%. And just general overall contractual increases certainly have an impact. So those are the factors influencing the budget for next year. Proposed changes for our current school year to next school year for the budget. We have some grant funded programs or positions that we are anticipating moving into the operating budget for next year. So we've run summer school, summer school or credit recovery program for middle school and high school students over the past couple of summers. That has been covered by grant funding. That grant funding is no longer going to be available in districts and we're anticipating moving that into the operating budget because the administration is still in support of running those programs for students. We have an LPN that we hired, I think, two years ago, who has been under a special education grant that Christine manages, but that obviously takes away opportunities for us to utilize that funding in a different way. So the idea would be to move that LPN into our operating budget as well. There's a, currently in our budget, there is a family consumer science position that is, that has not been, not been filled. I know that there was a lot of conversation around this position with the board. It was a position that was advertised, it was posted, it was, it was basically, it was not able to be filled and therefore the current school year doesn't have that position. I envision the same challenges moving into next year if we try to fill that position, particularly a part-time position. And so to me, it just makes the most sense to say, hey, listen, it's just going to be something we're going to, we're going to move away from. With that being said, that FTE could be utilized for what I was talking about earlier, which is the addition of an instructional coach slash curriculum coordinator. It's a position that is titled many different things in different districts. It depends on who it is that you talk to or the district that you're in. Several years ago, this district had somebody who was a director of curriculum and instruction. It was an administrative level position. I'm not looking for an administrative level position. Do I think there'd be benefit to a 12 month administrative position? Absolutely. But I think that this is a good first step for us to make to getting somebody back into the district to be focused on the idea of improving our instructional practices, working directly with our teachers, our department coordinators, with our building, building leadership, to talk about what we need to do to stay current in our, in our approach to utilization and instructional practices. The position would also have a responsibility of having a level of curriculum oversight, working very closely with department coordinators, building administration to make sure that our curriculum is staying current. Because if we don't have somebody with that focus to, to, to make sure it's staying current, then it's just going to become obsolete and that's not good for anybody, most importantly, students. The, again, that position I would see would be again, a full-time teaching position and similar to the structure of our department coordinators, there's stipend associated with it, which would bring out additional, additional responsibilities outside of the contractual workday as well as some summertime, some summertime work where they work with department coordinators as well. So those are the proposed changes from this year to next year. And just real briefly, on the next slide, Eric. If, as I said, the facility subcommittee, itself, Ava, Ava, Michael, the building administration, we're going to meet on Wednesday of this week, we're going to have a virtual meeting. And I certainly sent the link to everybody in the board. If you'd like to attend, it'd be great. Where to discuss and prioritize the capital budget for next year. Our current capital budget is $504,000 and $619, $619. Our identified capital needs per the 10 year plan are currently hovering around $2.7 million. So we've got a lot of talk to do. So our, our capital non-recurring balance as of November 30th, 2022 is just short of $600,000. These are the funds that the board may recall have been specifically earmarked for funding to help improve our athletic fields. And again, that's another thing that's going to be discussed at our facility subcommittee meeting as well. And our capital improvement plan balance as of November 30th, 2022 is, is just, just above $20,000. And that money would be available at the closeout at the locker room H V project. And that money would go into capital. She does that for me like all day, all day. So, and then finally, just regarding the capital improvement funds is the specific amount of the 21, 22 surplus funds from the operating budget is anticipated to be known after the final audit. That concludes my presentation and I can certainly try to answer any questions the board members may have.
First.
To get to your question. The touch view screens, are we doing it all up?
That's, so we, I believe that we've used. Just outdated. So, so initially we purchased one, I think, two years ago to try the new technology. And, and we used operating funds, but, and so you see one right over there. So we used operating funds to purchase that one just as a test. I believe then the following year, which was last year, we were able to purchase 12 of them through funding. We're anticipating, we're certainly applying for grant funding to try to pick up the cost of another 12 to 15, depending on how much grant funding is made available to the district. So hopefully that's going to be more that we are able to purchase through the grant. But we're still looking at being short by a fairly substantial amount. And we're looking at needing some local operating budget in order to move us to the end quicker. Now, the board could ultimately decide, hey, we'd rather do this in piece, we won't do it a little bit over time incrementally. And that's certainly something that the board can discuss and give us some guidance and direction on. I will tell you that our director of technology would love to just rip the bandaid off and move in that direction because he thinks the technology, and I certainly can understand this, is better for students and better for staff.
Are they, how much are they? Seven thousand dollars?
No, no.
They're shy of 2,000.
Oh, 2,000 dollars. Yeah, and
I don't have that, but I can sort of do that.
And then the the instructional coach, that's not a 12 month official, right?
Yeah.
You said that, okay. Those are my questions right now.
Eric?
Is there, do you have any educated guests at this point?
I would be very wary of giving an educated guest out because once I give it, and I don't, it's not going to dismiss it with your question. Once I put an educated guest out there, that becomes the number and, and we're still trying to figure some stuff out.
I'm okay with that. Yeah. For Andover, I think it would be worth seeing the folks in person. That's what I did last year. Town administrator and the board of selectmen, board of finance. I think the budget workshop is typically done with the board of finance. And if, if that could be worked out, receptive, I expect it will be. If you wanted to go, I would certainly go with you. Somewhat friendly based to them perhaps. Just as a comment, you know, I anticipate that the town budgets on their own are going to be just as inflation is, is hitting us, it's got to be hitting them. And to, to an extent, you know, I think they'll be understanding that, that, that it's just real. But on the other hand, particularly with board of finance, of course, I was, Sue and I were joking about this before, that now I'm on this side of the table. I used to be on the board of finance where, you know, it's a little bit different. And, and so they're going to be under a lot of pressure. And I'm sure if it's true in Andover, it's going to be true in Hebrew and Provo. So just their, their own operating and their, their own capital budget is going to be a lot for them to handle. And so when we come in with what is for the three towns, their biggest lineup, it's RAM. Or running the entire town. That will need and mentioned that Colin and I discussed this in some detail. Will need a pretty detailed story of exactly what happened to us. How we're trying to get grants to cover what we can. The fact that we're, we're only, our decrease in students is just 14 students over six grades. So it's not like we could have some adjustment based on a fewer number of students. It doesn't work that way. And, and let them know that we're sincerely feeling the pain that they're feeling and we're doing the best that we can. Although, you know, it seems to me it's going to, for, for boards of finance in three towns, this is going to be a bad news story. It's going to be bad news for their own budget and it's going to be bad news for us. So my, my belief is that we'll have to handle it carefully and with maximum communication.
I just want to clarify something that Eric said and something I said. Colin normally does go to all three towns to present the budget. Well, I believe, and maybe I'm wrong, when I believe and hear the question that I answered was, normally before COVID, just went to Marlboro and held a meeting there, not to present the entire budget, but to have some of the administration go through their pieces. And we also went to Andover and squished in a little library. I don't even know what it's.
The elementary.
The elementary school, we squished in there just to go over a bunch of items. So I agree Colin going to all of our three towns to present the entire budget is extremely important. So I agree Colin going to all of our three towns to present the entire budget is extremely important. But to go over, you know, just budget topics and have our meeting at every location, I don't see why we don't do it here and make it down in the morning. But Colin going to the board of finance meetings is extremely important.
So for that, for this, this other thing, if we had it remotely, that all three towns get to. Yeah, I'm with you.
Right, so that's, uh, that's the difference. And I don't know if anyone here even remembers us doing that because no one has been here.
Yeah, I think that, that's, I think that's good to get the clarity around this because I incorrectly remembered. My understanding of it is, um, a couple of departments, kind of making this up, a couple of departments might go to Andover and present just, you know, uh, athletics and special education. And then a couple of other departments would go to Hebron, or I'm sorry, not Hebron, would go to Marlboro and present, uh, social studies, facilities, and science. And it, it just seemed disjointed to me because.
I never liked it.
So, so I, I, but Sue, what I'm hearing you say is, and I agree with, I think it's important for each town to get a live presentation of what our district budget is and then afford everybody an opportunity to have a, 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 a single meeting that could be held here where all of the different departments and coordinators present their particular budget. Because that way, everybody's getting the same message versus Andover is getting one message, Marlboro is getting another.
And a complete message.
Yeah, it's not a single meeting. Those are done over multiple meetings.
Sure, sure.
We would be here till 12 o'clock.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So, so yeah, I mean, I can work to, to schedule it and I can communicate with the finance committee chairs and.
Yeah, and that, that also allows the, uh, officials from three towns to commiserate.
Yeah.
You know, should they, you know, they're all limited together.
So the, the sooner the better to get those budget dates out on the board.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, I have no questions.
Heather?
Um, do we have a history on, like, what did we do as a matter of process when the budget passed and when the budget failed? Like, I know everybody's new here, but we're, you know, exactly to what Sue's saying. Historically, we've done these smaller meetings. You go, um, and present to each of the, each of the communities. You know, I'm always going to go back to, to what's the comms plan that you want to get your story out and you want to tell people why things are changing. And there needs to be, to me, some transparency, you know, and there's, again, different ways you can do that. But, um, I think having a plan like that will help support the budget when it does come up for referendum and, and, and for voting. Because I think a lot of people just have a knee-jerk reaction, oh, you've increased the budget. I'm just voting no on that. No, 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 you gotta, we have to really figure out how we communicate why's increasing. So it wasn't really a question, just that, do we know our history on how we've done this and was it successful? And.
Certainly, certainly couldn't hurt to pull maybe some of the history and ask maybe Ping Scott, you know, on his yacht, wherever he is playing golf or whatever he's doing.
There, there is a budget flyer that's very helpful.
Yes.
It's a one-page budget flyer that's shared with us, and we can share it with, you know, on social media and Marlboro, even on our Facebook pages. Because I know we have one. I don't, I don't know if we use it intensely, but it's important to share that budget flyer. In the past, we have done, um, a workshop where the public can join and we can answer questions, very different than the public comments, not well-attended at all. Um, but I am not for one to just drop something just because it wasn't well-attended before, especially if our budget is going to be higher than normal. Um, but a workshop allows us to communicate to the community if they come and we can have conversations back and forth. Obviously Colin doing the majority of the talking and the answering of questions, all right. Uh, so that was another, you know, thing that we've done in the past. Um, maybe worth looking into if the budget's going to be much higher. And definitely going to the three towns, the board of finance, Colin going, and, you know, myself from Marlboro, the Marlboro representatives going with Colin to Marlboro, Hebron, Hebron, and Andover, Andover. I think that's also extremely important because the board of finances, they can't tell us, go cut $20,000 like they can, that they do locally to us. Uh, they could send us a letter strongly recommending that we lower it, and that has happened in the past. But that's all the board of finance, you know, really getting in front of them. And then if it fails, it's a nightmare. It's, it's truly a nightmare. We all have to come back to the table. Colin presents items that, uh, his suggestions on where we can cut, uh, at that point. Because when it fails, we really don't know why.
Right.
Only the chit chatter, but it's not like you write on the ballot. I'm not passing this because of this, so it's very hard to decipher, um, that. But community members will, will start coming out and they'll start vocalizing some items once they hear the bottom line number. Eric used to be one of them in the audience. And then we have to really go with our gut and really, um, you know, ensure that we get it to pass.
Those workshops available online, those recipes?
Uh, online wasn't available back in the day.
Oh, so we haven't been doing those? Was that, wouldn't that be?
We did, I think we did something like that last year, but it wasn't, I think to Sue's point, it was, it wasn't well-attended.
I was thinking.
But I'm not sure it was well-promoted either, to be truthful about it.
Of course, it would encourage more attendance in the region so that, so that parents can multitask.
Yeah.
Another thing I'll mention about the, the one-page sheet is that, uh, it reminds people that there's a vote coming. And one of the continuing challenges is that these budget votes are done at a very awkward time of the year, May 2nd. It's easy for people to forget that it's even there. And there'll be a certain family of no votes that will always show up, a certain family of yes votes that'll show up. And anything that we can do to communicate to people that, um, that, uh, that there is a vote coming and we, and we recommend that they vote yes. I think that's a, that's a push.
Really, that get out the vote game kind of comes down to what Sue was saying. It's the Marlboro folks really need to motivate the Marlboro folks, the Andover folks similarly, and the Hebron people really have to communicate pretty strong.
Post something on their Facebook page and say, vote yes. This school cannot do that. The school could just provide the information. Um, I normally don't say vote yes either. I normally just post, here's the flyer. If you have any questions, let me know. Please remember to vote. Uh, but th- those are some of the things that we've done in the past. And I'm thinking maybe the workshop is something we should consider, um, especially going to be a higher number.
Yeah. I think.
If you do it hybridly, like you said, it gives, you know, we're here, some folks are here, hybrid. It gives the parents the opportunity not to have to come out.
I know parents who listen from the side and they just, oh, yeah, absolutely.
The only other thing I would say is that to, to Colin's point about, and, and I think to your point too, was that kind of the disjointed presentation in the past. I feel like if we frame this properly where we're doing, you know, a series of the presentations where we break down, but people have an opportunity to get a full face of what we're also experiencing. Um, and I think, uh, that bodes a little better than, than just, than just the flyer or without the workshop or, so.
If you're doing a workshop before, it obviously will, uh, we do an app.
So we can incorporate some feedback and.
Right, it defeats the purpose. People will feel like, well, why do, why voice my opinion now? You already voted.
There's not a lot of work being going on.
Does the flyer go in the River East?
Uh, it does not go in the River East. It's a front and back flyer.
Might be important to frame some, some of the most critical talking points to, to.
We, we could put a, a press release, I guess, in the River East and a link to the flyer, and they could see the link and go out to the flyer that's on the website. Because I'm sure on the website, the flyer will be in there, making it easy accessible on the website too. I know in Marlboro, I talked to the superintendent, and when you sign into the page, the flyer immediately pops up in your face. And I think we do that here.
We have.
Yeah, so it, so you can't miss it, basically. You go and it pops up and you have to exit out. You don't want to see the flyer.
All right, anything else? Heather, Mike?
Is it possible to share the capital proposed items prior to Wednesday's, uh, meeting with, uh, the subcommittee and/or the entire board?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll, I'll circle back with, um, with, uh, Colin about the, kind of the proposals for how we schedule this out and lay this out and, and work to try and get us some scheduling options out, everybody as quickly as we can.
One more thing just to add. We normally had, um, a cutoff date. So say our meetings are Mondays, right? We wanted to decide another day. Um, you would tell us, well, if you have questions, can you send them to me the Wednesday before the meeting? So we, the board would give you all the questions and you would have all of the answers for that meeting. So you, you come prepared and have the answers. So that was another thing that worked very well. Because I know I have lots of questions most of the time, so I would rather send them to you so you have answers instead of say, oh, I'll get back to you.
Absolutely, good.
So you pick that date.
Yep. Okay, there's nothing else? I don't think there's any other options. I'm sorry, Carrie, I keep forgetting you're up there. Did, uh, do you have any questions?
Sorry, I didn't know my hand was raised.
No, it wasn't. I'm just checking, just making sure we include you in opportunity to ask any questions.
Oh, no, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. All right, that was a good discussion. Painful, but a good one. Um, all right, so I move this on to, uh, 11, nine, the financials.
Okay, so 11.9A, the packet has, um, for that projected goal shapeable position of $343,745. That's approximately $6,850 less than reported in November, in November's board meeting. Um, the operating fund, you'll note, is having some staff turnover, so you're seeing some savings there. We've also had a slight uptick in, um, getting substitute teaching applicants, which is a positive thing. Um, and our magnet school tuitions were still being reviewed because there seems to be a delay in getting some of the invoices from our correct partners. The capital improvement fund, we're focusing on the retention fund. The retention fund, unfortunately, needed an additional review. Um, that is at no additional cost to the district. Um, once that is completed, we're going to have the survey go and flag jerk for the wetlands, um, commission and to make sure that the project review, that we have the plans reviewed for the end of December. So we're almost here, so. The irrigation well replacement has been approved by the planning and zoning committee. The contractor has completed thing out of the underground tank, used all obsolete materials. And they've confirmed the integrity of all existing wiring. And the next steps will be to begin the removal of a pump from the existing well and drilling of the new pump should take place in January. Positive news for the capital non-recurring fund, the town of Hebron received some questions from the state indicating that the DOT project is being hopefully processed for closure from their standpoint, but they have not received any final confirmation. People Services is doing a great job of, um, monitoring their movements with their students and encumbering anything new or releasing any funds that are not being utilized for that student. Are there any questions? Okay, carrying then to 11.9B. This is going to require some action from the board of education. So basically the IRS, we have flexible spending accounts. So every employer through the IRS is allowed to have places where employees can put free tax dollars in for out-of-pocket health costs or daycare costs. In this situation, the IRS has increased the limit for employees to be able to contribute to calendar year 2023 to $3,050 from the current amount of what's $2,850. We work with progressive benefits. That, uh, helps us monitor the flexible spending accounts on our behalf. Um, and in order for us to be able to offer the higher increase IRS limit to our employees, um, the board of education has to, uh, look at page 31, um, of the document and follow the resolution and ask for Mr. McIner to sign off on, on your behalf. If you can, or so, we find to increase the, um, of that employee's allowance.
So just so I'm clear on this, that the bottom line is we're just sort of giving them the opportunity to put more. There's really no reason not to do this, Mike, are you sure?
Yeah. It's just one of those fine lines that's just across.
Okay, so if that's the case at this point, are there appropriate kind of same motion for that? All right, so is there a motion, uh, to, um, increase the amount, uh, employees are allowed to contribute to their flexible spending accounts from the current limit of $2850 to the new limit of 30, or 3,050 in 2023? Eric, thank you. Sarah second?
Second.
Thank you, Heather. Second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll have a voice vote. All in favor? Hi. Any opposed? None. That motion carries unanimously. Does that cover your vote?
Now we're on to 11.9C, the food service monthly report for, uh, ending November. So we're still on track for, um, and we have communicated with families to let them know that our free meals will be any end of January 10th and our meals will be paid up on January 11th. We've also received the money for our second allotment of the supply chain grant. So, um, we've received $24,899.83. And if you look at page two of the packet, you'll notice that because of that and because of how we're trending, we actually have a net income of $6,513. That's the month of November. Are there any questions that I could answer?
We're going to make it to the finish line of the 10th with the food money?
Yeah.
Okay. Hey, tap to go back and communicate something different. Any other questions?
So 11.9C, the student advocacy reports for middle and middle school are announced. If any council have any questions, those can.
Those are good things.
11.9E is the short-term assessment fund. And as requested in this month's report, I actually went to the website, so I didn't have to do the calculation. Um, they do a lovely job of providing all that information.
They do.
Um, I downloaded that and included that as part of the packet. Um, and as you can see for the month of October, we reinvested our dividend of $1,059.83. Are there any questions the board may have on that?
So where does that put us for our capital, 10-year capital plan? Now we're $2,269,000 versus $70,000. Great.
Okay, 11.9, we have the proposed funding transferred to allow for us, now that the board has, I'm asking to ask, um, to allow us to pay for the strategic plan. Um, and the cost is $17,000. We've got all of that in your packet. So I'm proposing to take money from the unallocated personnel line that is, um, that I reported on, that there's money available and to give some wide board of education sources, professional technical services, so that you can do the work for.
You need a motion for that?
I do.
Okay, so, uh, any questions? Conference. So go ahead and throw out a motion. So, uh, is there a motion to, uh, move $17,000 from the unallocated personnel fund to the, uh, to the system-wide board of education purchase professional tech services fund? Is there a second? Eric, thank you. Is there any discussion?
Jordan.
We did.
Yep.
Hearing none? I have a voice vote. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Which moves us to the committee reports, I believe, right? Yeah. So why don't we go around the room? I know there's been some committees that have met. I'll just rely on the board members to give us some feedback. So facilities, safety and transportation.
We're meeting Wednesday this week, six o'clock virtual. Discussion will include latest proposal from Tom Merwin Associates on the 316 field, which is the entire length of the field, north and south, I believe, or perhaps it's east and west. And the other most important portion of that discussion will include those items to be under consideration for the capital budget for '23, '24.
I said, one, one thing, we, we've had this, this capital budget plan has been around for how long? Yeah. So, and I know it's a 10-year plan if I'm right. Is there any discussion amongst the facility about potentially revisiting the items on that or the prioritization?
Yes, it's something that, that we've talked about with Michael Schleyhoffer in the past, and I think it's something that we need to pursue once again, especially with some sizable projects coming up in the coming years.
Yeah. Yeah. And the other thing is I'd hate for us to be, I mean, conditions change. So some things become more of priority, some maybe, you know, bump to a less priority. So I just hate for us to continue to work off of that, especially since we're sort of sparingly allocating money that took a hard, a long time to gather, you know?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. All right. Anyway, that was something that I know when I first came into the board was a couple of the previous board members who've since rotated out, super high priority to maintain that 10-year plan, but also keep it up to date. So. Okay. Anything else? Any questions for the facilities folks? Hearing none?
Just saying before I was on Board of Finance, capital improvement. Did have a nice clean plan and these items just keep pulling in. Thank you. You're all set with the fire department and that is another piece of, just coming right down. I think it's a great idea.
And look, I mean, it's a lot of work. So, I mean, we, obviously we've got to prioritize, but you know, from the facilities perspective, you've got a lot of things going on over there too. So.
Yeah, it's not the committee doing the work. It's hiring an engineering firm to come in and do the analysis. So it's a topic for discussion. We'll need to go out for proposals and we'll bring it back to the board and vote on it.
Yeah. Okay. Anything for finance and audit, compliance and insurance? Finance?
Discuss the strategic plan, something to.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for finance? Negotiations? So we're good, right? All right. We're good. And thank you, everybody, for your hard work. I mean, without going into the gory details, it was clearly a good negotiation from both sides. And so that's a good, good result. Policy. Carrie, anything for policy?
I'll keep bringing up.
Please, good.
Yeah, we went over three policies that we listed. Two of them, we brought up during the new business section of the agenda. Scheduled meetings on Tuesday, January 10.
Okay. Yeah, that's great. Thank you very much. Any questions for policy? Okay, go to program and communication. I don't think we've had any. Yeah, we haven't had that. So facilitators. So Dr. Benson Clark has moved on. And so we have vacancies for both our Eastcon rep and our CAPE rep. So I didn't really frankly want to appoint a new rep as the previous chair because we were going to have elections in two weeks. So I did specifically didn't, you know, provide an appointment to that. With all of the committees and to include the facilitators for those two entities, what I would like to do is similar to what we did last year was just, you know, poll the field. What are your interests in as far as, as far as committees or subcommittees are concerned? Give me your feedback and then hopefully we can kind of work out something where it entertains everybody's ideal circumstance. And then certainly talk to everybody if that's not the case. But we would throw the Eastcon and the CAPE positions into that mix. Again, definitely get your feedback, anybody that's interested in participating in that part or serving as our rep or reps for that, for those two entities would also be helpful. And I'll, I'll send out an email that, that gives everybody kind of the, what I'd like to get from you from feedback and try to get that done pretty quickly. And then once we establish who those, those, those subcommittee leaders are, or subcommittee members are, it'll be incumbent upon you as your, part of your first meeting to identify who's going to be, serve as your lead for the year. Believe it or not, there's a pretty explicit and extensive policy that explains how you go about that. So is there anything from Eastcon or CAPE that anybody felt like they wanted to share? I know that occasionally people participate in stuff that not everybody goes to.
I don't think we've had. Understand what the obligation is?
There's really no obligation. We use CAPE as an opportunity to, you know, they're a resource, the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. They're, they're actually a great information resource. I mean, I've certainly gone to a couple of their, their offerings. They, sometimes it's themed, sometimes it's just the general annual meeting where they present a lot of information. They bring in some pretty good speakers and I rely on them for just rudimentary stuff like, like I think Colin reached out to him to make sure that we had the process for the board election, officers' election, correct today. And something for our executive committee, I got some feedback from Nick Crusoe to specifically make sure how, how it's, what's the board, what's the CAPE recommendation for how to frame that, that, that discussion that we'll move forward to. So that's really all it is. It's not really any requirement. I think, and it's the same thing with Eastcon. We, you know, we, we act as sort of a, we send a liaison or a representative to it to provide both our feedback and also kind of bring back what, what they are discussing or things that are relevant that, you know, impact us.
I think with the Eastcon, Dr. Benson Clark served on, and forgive me, I don't know the technical name, but they're essentially what Equine is, they're, right? So, so they have a, they have an organizational framework that's not unlike a Board of Education where it's, the members of their board are from districts that are within the res. And so Dr. Benson Clark was on our Board of Education, but she was also on their executive board or board or whatever it's called. And so she would attend board meetings much in the same way that board members would attend these meetings and, you know, act in a similar manner. So, so there is a little bit of a difference with that. So there's a, probably a bit more of a formal time commitment with Eastcon. Eric Petula is the Eastcon Executive Director and reached out to me in the wake of Dr. Benson Clark's resignation. And I shared this with, with Mike and said, you know, we've had a longstanding history of having active involvement of somebody from the Ram Board of Ed and would love to continue that if it's possible. So.
Yeah, they specifically reached out to ask us to have somebody participate. So. Anyway, so, well, like I said, I'll, I'll throw that out to everybody, gather everybody's interest and then try to circle back with everybody and do the best we can to try and shape the best circumstance for everybody.
It would be helpful to know what night time, time commitment and all of that.
Yeah.
That would be great. I didn't know that that was such a formal thing. CAPE, we get all of the CAPE emails, so I'm not quite sure.
Yeah.
There's much to do with CAPE. I reach out to CAPE a lot too for questions. We all could reach out, be paid in service. Nick Crusoe is awesome. They all are awesome there. But Eastcon is sitting, that's a time commitment.
I can get that specifically.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a bunch of offerings and the, there's a budget within the school to pay for that. So if, you know, you see things at CAPE that you'd like to participate in, you just have to communicate with Colin and he'll work with the staff to make sure that they reserve a spot for you and all that kind of thing. So.
CAPE offers a new board member meeting too.
Yeah.
That I don't know if you've attended, but it's, it's very good.
Yeah.
I've attended years ago. It might be worth looking into. I think now it's right around the time they offer it, new board members come in because of November and stuff.
Yep. All right. Why don't we move on to item 13, public comment? So just bear with me for the second round of reading. Hebron Andover Marlboro Community Engagement and Attendance at Board of Education Public Meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act, if discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in the discussion of the comments presented. At this time, is there anybody present that would like to present? Please?
I don't know how you all do it. I'm exhausted. One part of the process as a citizen is to continue to inform myself of public decisions. Alluding to a contract negotiation a number of years back, which had all that $100,000. And brought that up knowing that you would have a discussion. What I learned tonight is that it was a negotiation and that the board approved. As a citizen, I have no idea what else is happening. Would that negotiation have an impact under factors and trends influencing the budget under contractual obligation? Would this negotiation have an influence on this year's budget? Next year's budget and past times, budgets three or four years down the road? I said earlier that this is a hard job. As a citizen, I want to let you know that I am totally uninformed as to the decisions that we made. If there's any financial implication to what you just approved, it will be noted next year as contractual obligations. So I'm an uninformed citizen. I don't have any say in that. I think I should. One thing that this board just did is they gave up the obligation, the ability to discuss contractual obligations when the budget comes up next year. We'll be talking in this town, a multimillion dollar facility to, to put the budget in, all works, facility. We mentioned inflation, we mentioned pressures at all three towns. We talked about the boards. I'm trying to remember what we talked about. We'll be, and you will be putting a great deal of energy rightly so into the minutia of the minor part of the budget, say it's minutia. Whereas contractual obligations are being driven through a new budget. In over a decade, yet to hear any discussion about people coming to that decision. I don't think it's wrong, I just don't know what it is. With that in mind, I have wondered if I can ask a question. Do I, as a citizen, will this board present this negotiation product to this town's select? And will this negotiation be posted in time last week, December? And that's a question. And if it is to be posted, will the board of select have the ability to say they object to it? When I researched things earlier, I realized that, in fact, the division I led in some of the past negotiations, I understood that this negotiation will be, or any negotiation is posted. And that the public can, you'll comment to the select. And the select men can, they choose. I'm not objecting anything that's been, I'm objecting that I don't understand. I don't understand what responsibility I have as a citizen to give feedback to whichever entity I should back to as a citizen. So I ask a question, and if you have an answer, that's fine. We don't just say, you know, will we be posting the negotiation product? It's just approved by the smoke.
I apologize, but we can engage in a discussion or a question and answer period as part of the public comment. That's part of the previous piece. But, but you, we understand, we, we've gathered your feedback.
Okay, but it was on the agenda, so. I think we'll, okay, even information is out of order. And again, if that's the case, but if it is to be posted, I was wondering through this board, what did we need to know? That a public document is to be posted, is open for comment. It can be found at the city hall, town hall. Anyways, I must say, I'm tired. I'm going. Wish you all happy holidays and a happy year.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else present for public comment? Please.
Oh, good evening. You can sit down like 22 or in Del Row. I just wanted to say it was, it was great to have speakers here tonight that we had come in, talk about some of the things that we're going to work on as a district. It's good to know that. Teachers would be happy to know that we're moving in a direction to make things better at Ram. I did want to mention, I was a little disheartened. There's, there's three more resignations tonight. For personal and family reasons, I'm not going to insinuate any reasons for them leaving. People retire. It's the life cycle of a faculty. But I do want to mention them again. Just out of respect for, for the years they've spent at Ram. Joyce LaCavoli has worked forever at Ram. She worked at the high school, the middle school. I got to work with her at the middle school. She's one of the most funniest and creative teachers. I've been lucky to have her for a long time. And I want, she should be recognized for that. Paul Bancroft is exactly the kind of teacher you want to keep in this district. Teachers that go out of their way to create new curricula, new programs for students. Beyond his, his educational certificates, his professional responsibilities that he had. He's brought that passion to the high school. He's taking kids who didn't know what they wanted to do in their lives, brought them through the CERT program, given them avenues and opportunities that, that they never thought they had. Lastly, I do want to mention Linda Thurgood Lund. She is probably the biggest unsung hero at Ram. She works with some of the most special kids at Ram, some of the most difficult in terms of their special needs. She works tirelessly to make them feel included and welcome and, and just as much as part of a Ram community as they, as they ought to be. She's done that for many years tirelessly and with such grace. She's not, I think she was staying really at Ram. And when the board makes comments about, you know, we won't be able to replace them, the truth is we won't. And I'd ask the board to start some conversations about how are we going to start attracting teachers, period, to Ram? There seems to be a shortage of teachers, if you haven't heard. It doesn't seem to be a profession people are willing to stick around or come. I know Ram's had its own troubles filling positions for people that have left in recent years. And I think it would really help the board to start having those conversations now because we will start losing prospective teachers to other districts. Their, the profession itself is changing. What teachers want is changing. The types of districts that they're looking at applying to is changing. And I think it would be helpful if the board really started having some conversations about what can we do to, to start recruiting teachers to Ram? Teachers affect curriculum programming. We, we've heard from recent graduates today, the faculty got to hear from recent graduates. They, they talked about their experiences and not just their core classes, but all the, all the other electives that they get to take at Ram. And you've done a great job of providing them with such a wide scope of, of education here at Ram. But without teachers, you won't be able to offer those things anymore. That's just the reality of it. If you cannot get teachers here, you, you cannot fill a certification program without somebody with qualifications that Mr. Bancroft have and they're just not out there. Finding someone to do the things that Linda Thurgood Lund has done for the past 30 some years. It'll be hard just to get somebody into that position and just let alone do the job that she did. But there doesn't seem to be people out there that want to come and fill that position. So I think Ram really needs to look as a community, what do we want to do to try to bring teachers into this, into this community and keep it, keep it expanding, programming, curriculum, that all takes teachers for those positions. And as we lose teachers and we can't fill them, that, that, that just shrinks. It gets smaller and smaller due to scheduling, due to teachers, due to certifications. And so I, I think your conversation sooner rather than later is going to be really important, keeping this district, keeping this district really doing what we're doing right now. That's providing top-notch quality education for all of our kids here. So, oh, I meant to mention too, Sue was talking about why do we have those meetings in three towns? I believe that was, there was some concern from the three communities, the elderly population about being able to get to these meetings. That was in the past when we used to do the Andover, Hebron and Marlboro budget meetings. I think that was one of the reasons why. I'm not sure if that's the same sentiment where people had, you were trying to get to those meetings. I know that was one of the reasons. I hope everyone has a good holiday. Have a restful time with your family and friends. Have a restful time with your family and friends, appreciate the work you did with us. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else present for public comment? Okay, seeing none, anybody online for public comment, please raise your digital hand. Eric will let us know. Okay, hearing none, or the digital, the digital hand. Move on to informational items, anything from the calendar of events or the, or 14.2, the student in school, out of school?
No, thanks, I'm on my part.
Yeah, so the only thing I did, actually I have one question on 14.2. One of the things I guess in my mind, I look at this and I say to myself, I, and it doesn't even need to be necessarily specific to the report, but maybe just feedback, are we trending? Same, like is there been a spike there and we, you know, some, some feedback whether or not we, something's changed, we need to zone in on that a little bit.
That's true, the other report had, year over year.
Yeah, I think some, some level of we're sort of operating in sort of the same zone that we normally are, seeing the same things or if there's some sort of significant difference. And again, that could just be some verbal feedback or whatever it is. Any other questions for 14.1 or 14.2? Okay, hearing none, that moves us on to item 15, executive session. And the discussion of the superintendent's evaluation. I entertain a motion to move to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the superintendent's evaluation, further move to invite the superintendent, Paula McAmara, into the executive session at a point that we determined.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Do a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that, that passes unanimously and we will move into executive session.